Good evening, and welcome to the Ocean Side Planning Commission.
Recording in progress.
For Monday, January 23rd. If I can get everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Custer, would you lead us?
Yes. Place your hand over your heart and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, in the business world of the liberty and justice of our land.
Thank you. City Planner, would you please do the roll call?
Certainly. Chairman Rosales.
Present.
Vice Chair Morrissey.
Here.
Commissioner Balma.
Present.
Commissioner Custer.
Here.
Commissioner Dodds.
Present.
Mr. Simons. And Commissioner Malik.
Present.
Let the record show that all members, with the exception of Commissioner Simons, are present, and we have a quorum.
Thank you. Communications on matters not on the agenda. This is the public's opportunity to address the Planning Commission. Again, this will be an item that you'd speak to that's not on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to take us up on that, please come forward, give us your name, and you'd have three minutes. Not seeing anybody come forward, then we'll move on to approval of the minutes from our last meeting, which was January 9th. I'll entertain any comments or edits to that. Otherwise, a motion, please. Commissioner Malik has made a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting. A second?
A second.
And a second. Commissioner Dodds, thank you for that. Moving on, we do have one item tonight. Whoa, I'm sorry, we need to vote. Getting ahead of ourselves.
What? No, oh, well, I wasn't here. Oh, abstain. Yes, okay, sorry.
Look, Chair Rosales, let the record show that the motion passes 4-0 with Commissioners Balma and Custer abstaining.
Thank you. Next item is a consent item. If a commissioner would like to pull this item for discussion, they may do so. Otherwise, I would look for a simple motion for approval of this item. You have the staff report in front of you, and it would be a motion to approve the resolution as proposed by staff.
Make a motion when you approve.
Motion's been made by Vice Chair Morrissey. Can I get a second?
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Balma. Let's go ahead and vote.
Let the record show the motion passes 6-0.
Thank you. Nothing on our agenda listed under transportation items, so we'll go to public hearings. We have two items this evening. The first is consideration of a conditional use permit for 4161 Ocean Side Boulevard. The applicant is Everything, Wines &amp; Spirits. Let's start with disclosures. I'll lead. Familiar with the location? A staff report was provided. Look through that and drive by that location pretty frequently. Commissioner Custer?
Looked at Google Maps and read the report.
Thank you. Commissioner Malik?
I read the report. I've been by the location previously.
Thank you. Vice Chair Morrissey?
Read the report and familiar with the site.
Thank you. Commissioner Balma?
Site visit and staff report.
And Commissioner Dodds?
Very familiar with the site and have been by the site quite a few times.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Dane. You gonna walk us through this?
Yeah. Good evening, Chair Commissioners. My name is Dane Thompson with Planning Division, and I will be presenting item number five tonight, the Everything, Wine &amp; Spirits Liquor Store Conditional Use Permit. The project is located in the Del Oro Marketplace Shopping Center, south of Ocean Side Boulevard and west of College Boulevard, within the Rancho Del Oro Planned Commercial Zone. This is a visual of the suite that the applicant intends to occupy. Everything, Wine &amp; Spirits would offer a wide range of craft beers, imported wines, and artisanal spirits. Because this project devotes more than 25% of their shelf space to alcoholic beverages, they are considered a liquor store, which is a regulated use, requiring a CUP approved by the City Council prior to operation. Tonight's vote will be to make a recommendation to the City Council. The project's site is a 3,700-square-foot existing commercial suite. The project applicant is not proposing any major exterior alterations, only interior tenant improvements. The project has been reviewed and found to be compliant with all relevant city codes and policies. It's consistent with the general plan, as it's compatible with existing land uses. It complies with the Rancho Del Oro Master Plan, as that document allows liquor stores subject to this use permit. And it's consistent with the municipal code regarding required employee training. With the conditions placed on the project, staff believes that the conditional use permit findings can be made, that the project will not be detrimental to public health or safety. The project's site, oh, sorry, excuse me, all regulated uses are prescribed certain separations from sensitive uses, including other regulated uses, residential districts, churches, parks, playgrounds, and the like. This site is not meeting all of those required separations, and so they are requesting a waiver. City Council may grant that waiver if the listed findings can be made, that the proposed use will not be contrary to the public interest, will not impair nearby property, and will not encourage the development of an adult entertainment area or otherwise promote community The project's site is located within 1,000 feet to a smoke shop and adjacent massage establishment. Those sites are located across the Ocean Side Boulevard corridor. The shortest walking distance between those uses and the project's site is about 1,300 feet. The project's site is also located within 500 feet of a residential district to the south. That district is separated by the Loma Alta Creek, as well as the Sprinter rail tracks. The shortest walking distance to the nearest residential property would be over 1,500 feet. For these reasons, staff believes that the project meets all the findings shown previously, and that a waiver of locational requirements is warranted. With that, staff recommends the Planning Commission confirm issuance of a Class 1 Categorical Exemption per SEQA Article 19, Section 15, 301b, existing facilities, and adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number 2023-P02 recommending City Council approval of conditional use permit, CUP 2210, and a waiver of locational requirements for a liquor store at 4161 Ocean Side Boulevard Suite 100. That concludes my presentation. The applicant is here as well. They will make a short presentation, and then both of us will be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. If the applicant would come forward, I understand you have a short presentation. For the record, if you give us your name, please.
Yeah, my name is Jeffrey Kim. I am representing the applicant. I am with Art Rodriguez Associates.
Great. Jeffrey, go ahead, and if you need to pull the mic a little closer to you when you speak.
And I will run through his presentation as quick as I can. I didn't know Dane's presentation would be that thorough, so I'll try and go over the redundant points a little bit quick. Good evening, Commissioners. As I mentioned, my name is Jeffrey Kim with Art Rodriguez Associates, and we are representing the applicant, Ray Ibrahim, and Everything, Wine &amp; Spirits, for this application of a To reiterate, this request is for a conditional use permit pursuant to Ocean Side Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance Article 41, to allow the sale of a full line of alcoholic beverages for off-site consumption in conjunction with a new 3,729-square-foot liquor store called Everything, Wine &amp; Spirit. The proposed hours of operation are from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. on Sunday to Thursday, and 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. on Friday and Saturday. Now, I would like to go over the project request in a little bit more detail. As I mentioned, this is a 3,729-square-foot commercial space. It is in a one-story tenant space within the Del Oro Marketplace. The subject store will be located on a 1.52-acre parcel located at the intersection of College Boulevard and Ocean Side Boulevard. The concept for the store is a high-end liquor store with items such as craft beers, artisan wines, and high-end distilled spirits. The concept of the store can be comparable to a Bevmo in terms of store offering. In this slide, you can see that Everything, Wine &amp; Spirits, highlighted in orange, is located along Ocean Side Boulevard, which is a well-established commercial corridor. It is bound by College Boulevard to the east, and the Sprinter rail line to the south, and the Del Oro Avenue to the west. This subject property is zoned P1 Rancho Del Oro Plan Development. The properties to the north are also zoned PD Plan Development. The properties to the east are zoned CG Commercial General. The properties to the south are zoned RS Residential, and the properties to the west are zoned PD1 Plan Development. This is a prime location for business, as it is located along a heavily trafficked commercial corridor. In addition, the College Boulevard Sprinter Line Station is located within 500 feet of the store. Here you can see an extensive site plan of the Del Oro Shopping Center with Everything, Wine &amp; Spirits located at the bottom left in orange. The store has plentiful shared parking spaces for patrons of the shopping center. This is the floor plan concept of Everything, Wine &amp; Spirits. As you can see, there is extensive shelving for wine located in the middle of the store on high Mac shelves. There are walk-in drink coolers located along the edges of the store for cold drinks, as well as a beer cave on the right-hand side of the plant. A service counter is located near the store entrance and exit on the left-hand side of the plant. There are no proposed physical changes to the exterior of the building as part of this project request. On October 6, 2022, our office had held a community open house to discuss our project requests with residents and business owners of the community in accordance with the enhanced Community Notification Plan. The event was held via Zoom, and notification mailers for the event were sent out to residents and business owners within 1,500 feet of the store in late September 2022. No members of the community were in attendance or contacted our office with any concerns, but the virtual community meeting was ended in about 30 minutes. A record of all this information was submitted to the case file ahead of tonight's hearing. Now, I would like to speak on the applicant of the project, Ray Ibrahim. Ray has been an active businessman and community member in San Diego County for many years. He has an extensive resume of businesses that he has helped open up within the county. These businesses include three other liquor stores, seven Jersey Mikes, three Little Caesars, two Junction Bar &amp; Grills, True North Tavern, and Wagyu Shwarm McGrill. He has helped employ more than 400 people within San Diego County throughout his various businesses. He is also a very involved community member. Since 2013, every last week of March, Ray donates 100% of his Jersey Mike sales to Ray D's Children Hospital. He also donates subs and food to firefighters and the Red Cross during the fire seasons to help support them as well. As Ray has owned and operated three other liquor stores in the past, he has knowledge and experience operating a business with a liquor license. There have been no reported violations with the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control at any of Ray's businesses, and he plans on carrying the same principles and standards with him with Everything, Wine &amp; Spirits. Finally, I would like to touch on the responsibilities of the operators. Everything, Wine &amp; Spirits will implement rigorous measures to comply with all rules and regulations associated with the sale of alcoholic beverages set by the City of Ocean Side, Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, and Ocean Side PD. The owners and operators of the establishment fully understand that it is a privilege by the City of Ocean Side and Department of ABC to be allowed to sell alcohol for off-site purposes, and will ensure that there will be no impact on the surrounding neighborhood or businesses. All employees of Everything, Wine &amp; Spirits will be required to go through the proper LEAD training as dictated by ABC. Staff will be trained on how to identify patrons under the age of 21, and how to properly and safely handle the sale of alcoholic beverage. To conclude, I would like to touch on the ABC statistical information. Everything, Wine &amp; Spirits is located in Census Track 185.16. There are only 11 residents within 500 feet of the subject store. There have been no residential protests submitted to the ABC file. Ocean Side PD has also helped provide crime statistic information to ABC, and it was determined that this area is in a very low-crime-rate area. It is also important to note that there is not an overconcentration of licenses, as there are two off-site licenses allowed within the Census Track and zero currently exist. Yeah, and this will conclude our presentation for tonight. I, along with Peter Impala, will be available to respond to any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Any questions for the applicant? Go ahead, Commissioner Dodds.
I have a question and a concern. The first, the question that I have is the potential for loitering. This is considered a liquor store, and what are you doing to control that?
Yes, so with loitering concerns, the owner and operator can also put up no loitering signs outside of the business to help mitigate any concerns in that regard. They do, they'll do routine parking lot checks to ensure there's just orderly conduct outside of the business. Yeah, and I can speak with the business owner further to develop a further plan, but that's what we have.
Will there be security or anything like that?
At the moment, there are no security guards posed for the business, but there are adequate security cameras located throughout the subject site, in the interior of the store, as well as the exterior of the building. And all footage will be retained for 90 days and be able to be handed over to Ocean Side PD upon request.
The concern that I have is, in the report and in your presentation, both presentations, neither, both fail to recognize that this liquor store is directly across from a McDonald's that has a children's zone. Was there any consideration to that?
There was consideration in regards to just the surrounding context and the community, but we believe that the operation of the store as a high-end liquor store will be a net positive to the community. It's adding a use to the area that will diversify the businesses and store offerings, so we don't believe that it will have a negative impact on the surrounding community.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. I don't see any more questions, so, Commissioner Balma, go ahead.
I just had some curious questions, like, is this the only higher-end liquor store that this applicant has done? He said he has another liquor store. Is it the same kind of level like this one?
Yes, I believe so. He operates a few other liquor store establishments. I don't have the names of them handy, but I can provide those to the council upon request following this meeting.
I just was wondering, and the other question was, I've never seen a beer cave before. Is it something that you'd actually be able to walk inside, then, as you shop for your beer?
Yes.
That's kind of interesting.
Yeah. Various liquor stores throughout California, they use the same concepts for a beer cave. I believe it's just to kind of keep the merchandise, it's also in a protected area, a little safer, keeps the merchandise a little cooler, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's an offering that's on a higher-end scale.
Thank you.
I believe that's it, Mr. Kim. We'll call you up if we have any other questions.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so we'll invite the public to address this item. Any slips to speak?
No, we do not have any slips this evening.
Great. We don't have any slips to speak, but that doesn't mean that you can't come forward and address the commission on this item before we close the public hearing. Don't see a rush to the dais, so we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to staff for discussion, a motion, questions. Colleagues, what are you feeling like? Seems pretty straightforward, but.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Custer, go ahead.
I make a motion that we confirm issuance of a Class A Categorical Exemption per the California Environmental Quality Act, Article 19, Section 15, 301b, existing facilities, and adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number 2023-P02 recommending City Council approval of a conditional use permit, COP 2200010, and a waiver of location requirements for a proposed liquor store to be opened at 4161 Ocean Side Boulevard, Suite 100.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Custer, a second? Second by Commissioner Malik. No further discussion, let's go ahead and vote.
Chair, let the record show that the motion passes unanimously.
Terrific, thank you. Good luck, Mr. Kim. We'll go to our next item, Agenda Item Number Six, is consideration of a zoning tax amendment related to the housing program. The applicant here is the City of Ocean Side. Disclosures, staff report would be my disclosure. Vice Chair Morrissey?
Same, staff report.
Commissioner Balma?
Staff report.
Commissioner Dodds?
Staff report.
Commissioner Custer?
Staff report.
And Commissioner Malik. Thank you very much. Good evening. Rob, how are you?
Excellent, Chair Rosales. You seem to be having a technical difficulty. I'll see if we can get IT support here.
Take your time. Would you like us to adjourn while you're doing that, or you think it's a pretty simple There we go. It was a simple fix.
Sorry about that.
Good evening, Chair and Planning Commissioners. I'm Rob Demahowski with the Development Services Department, and here this evening to present a zone amendment for a, to amend Article 30, Section 3042, for mixed-use plans of the zoning ordinance to implement Housing Program Number Seven of the Housing Amendment, which addresses adequate sites for, to accommodate the city's RENA and no net loss. The city's housing amendment was adopted by the City Council on June 16, 2021. As required by law, it was adopted within 120 days of the statutory deadline of August 15, 2021, for adopting a housing amendment in the San Diego region. The housing amendment was submitted to Housing, the California Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD for short, for compliance review on April 2, 2021. HCD reviewed the draft and has provided the city two compliance letters, one on June 1, 2021, and the second on April 22, 2022. And since then, staff has been working with HCD to address remaining compliance items so that the HCD can issue a determination of compliance with housing element law. One of the remaining obstacles to certification is a result of Assembly Bill 1398, which was signed into law in September of 2021. Housing law requires cities to demonstrate that they have adequate capacity to meet its RENA. When a city does not have adequate capacity under its current land use and zoning, it must rezon sites to accommodate the shortfall of units. AB 1398 was enacted to ensure that local governments enact their rezonings within an adequate timeline and a jurisdiction that fails to adopt an HCD-compliant housing element is subject to the bill, which changed the period to adopt rezonings for the shortfall within one year of the statutory deadline. It was previously three years from the statutory deadline, so that would have been three years from April 15 of 2021. Since Ocean Side does not have a HCD-certified housing element, the city is subject to AB 1398. Having a non-compliant housing element makes the city ineligible for certain state grant programs and other funding sources that are allocated to all cities throughout the state, and it also makes the city vulnerable from certain Housing Accountability Act provisions. One recently in the news called "The Builder's Remedy" is where, when a city does not have a compliant housing element, meaning they don't provide adequate sites, a developer could potentially propose an affordable housing project, I believe with 20% affordable, in any zone district to, since that city failed to provide a housing sites inventory to meaningfully address housing capacity for all income levels. And the San Diego region was placed at a disadvantage, as clearly seen, the bill did not go into effect until September, and the, it was adopted in September and went into effect on January 1, 2022, which is well beyond the San Diego region's deadline for adopting the housing element. And the city has always intended to complete rezonings as part of the general plan update, specifically with the Smart and Sustainable Corridor specific plan. And given the implications of AB 1398, staff is proposing interim text amendments to complete the necessary rezonings in advance of the adoption of the Smart and Sustainable Corridor Plan, which is scheduled to be considered towards the end of this year. The text amendments would implement Housing Program Number Seven of the Housing Amendment, which intended to address adequate sites to accommodate RENA and no net loss, and includes the following items. The city must rezon at least 33 acres to allow residential development with a density range of 35 to 43 dwelling units per acre to address the city's shortfall of 1,086 units. That means that the city did not have enough existing sites that are zoned for residential to allow housing, so the shortfall is the need to rezon sites to accommodate these units. Since the city is relying on mixed-use sites to accommodate its shortfall under state law, it now must allow standalone residential in mixed-use zones, and the city must also allow a by-right approval process for projects that reserve 20% of the units as affordable. To address these requirements, Article 30, Section 3042 would be amended to increase the allowable density from the current 29 dwelling units for mixed-use project to a minimum of 35 to 43 DUs per acre. It would allow standalone multifamily housing on sites identified for lower-income units in the housing sites inventory. It establishes a by-right approval process. This would be a ministerial process with no discretionary action, similar to other state laws, for projects that reserve 20% affordable units. And lastly, this amendment would only apply to commercial candidate rezoning sites in the housing sites inventory, which are located within the boundaries of the Smart and Sustainable Corridor Plan. And this amendment would also, is also intended to be interim and with sunset upon adoption of the Smart and Sustainable Corridor Plan. As previously just noted, the candidate sites would be existing commercial sites with a commercial zoning designation. Those sites are noted in blue on the housing sites inventory map and are generally located in the areas highlighted in, by the orange, by the. in the areas highlighted in, by the orange, by the green circles. For reference, here are the proposed amendments to Article 30 noted in bold and underlined. A density range of 35 to 43 duoden units per acre shall apply to all commercial zone sites identified as candidate rezoning corridor sites in the 2021 through 2029 Housing Amendment Sites Inventory. And as shown on this table, the proposed increase to 35 would accommodate potentially an additional 4,015 units and adequately cover the shortfall of 1,086 units. Approximately 33 of the commercial sites totaling 2,990 units are designated for lower-income households and could potentially allow for standalone multifamily projects. The surplus would also ensure the no-net-loss provision per Senate Bill 166, which requires the city to maintain a sufficient capacity to accommodate remaining unit, RINA. So if a site, if a project or a site developed at less units than was allocated, or a property is rezoned, the city is obligated to address the shortfall on another site, so having a surplus is important to be able to address that, and the inventory is potential capacity. There is not a specific site where known development will go. And going on to the next provision, for multifamily housing pursuant to Government Code, Section 65583.2, standalone 100% multifamily housing projects shall be permitted on all commercial zones, zone sites designated for low and very low-income categories, as identified in the Housing Amendment Sites Inventory, subject to the following. The development plan shall be in accordance with Article 43 of the zoning ordinance for projects not reserving at least 20% units as affordable to lower-income households, and a project shall be permitted by right and subject to ministerial review if at least 20% of the units are reserved as affordable to lower-income households. Standalone multifamily housing projects shall comply with development standards of the high-density residential district. A density range of 35 to 43 duoden units per acre shall apply to those projects, and residential use shall occupy at least 50% of the total floor area if it is part of a mixed-use project. So the city cannot require more than 50% to be non-residential for projects on those The proposed text amendments would increase the mixed-use density allowance for commercial zone properties exclusive of coastal zone and downtown, consistent with the Smart and Sustainable Corridor specific plan. The amendments would satisfy zoning requirements outlined in Program Seven of the Housing Amendment in accordance with state housing law and would get the city one step closer to having a certified housing element. As mentioned, a certified housing element has benefits to the city, including protection from the builder's remedy and also making the city eligible for a variety of grant sources. And as previously noted, the amendments would be superseded upon adoption of the Smart and Sustainable Corridor specific plan. As such, staff is recommending the Planning Commission confirm issuance of a notice of exemption per California Environmental Quality Act, Article 5, Section 15061b3, under the common sense exemption that SEQA only applies to projects which have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment, and adopt Planning Commission Resolution 2023 P03 recommending city council approval of the zone amendment with findings of approval. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Rob. I have maybe an odd question. You had a slide there, maybe third or fourth from the end, about candidates for rezoning, commercial candidates. It was actually a table, I think. That one there. So these are potential candidates for rezoning. How, what's the approach on the underutilized category? I mean, who determines that? What kind of metrics are used? Can you explain that a little bit?
Yes, Chair Rizales, the underutilized sites, there was, involved a fairly extensive process from early on when we were selecting appropriate sites to be within the inventory, and there's general thresholds on, the city selects underutilized sites as being those that have redevelopment potential. So that can be a number of factors, the age of the existing development, floor area, lot coverage, sites that generally have been underutilized. So if there's commercial sites with large parking lots that may have been built in the 70s, 80s, and there might not be a demand, there's potential there. And also looking at turnover of uses and other factors to identify those sites that would be eligible, and there's also thresholds on size requirements. So per state law, lower-income sites have to be a minimum size, I believe it's half an acre or larger to be considered a viable site for affordable housing.
Okay, yeah, that helps, understand it. So there's an approach. Any other questions for staff? Go ahead.
How does density bonus play into this? Does that mean it gets to go even higher?
Commissioner Ballma, Chair Rizales, the density bonus does not come into play with the housing sites inventory. The capacity is based on the proposed density increase, which would be 35 to 43 duoden units per acre, and at this time, that's in line with the draft Smart and Sustainable Corridor specific plan, which there may even be an opportunity for increased density at certain nodal areas. There's areas where the city is trying to incentivize housing along transit corridors. There might be opportunities, but this would focus on meeting the capacity, and projects would have the ability to apply density bonus based on this density range.
So they could be higher than the, whatever the proposed was, 23 to 43, because I forgot now. Yeah, it could go over that, right? If they had a density bonus project that they proposed on one of your sites?
Absolutely, it's possible, and that's not, density bonus is a tool that's given to developers, so that's not taken into account when the city is accounting for capacity in the housing sites inventory. We don't, we can't forecast where a density bonus may or may not go, but there are sites that are identified for lower-income categories, which would generally align with our goal of having affordable housing at those locations.
Like, I was just looking at, trying to look at the plan to try to pick out, just to visualize some of these sites you guys picked out, or that you guys have analyzed. The one was kind of by Buddy Todd Park. It's like below it, I guess. What site is that? Is that, is that an existing? Just kind of wanted to fill out, like, what do you guys, like, I think it's actually on this one here, would be like the one, like, right down from, say, if you look down from the N on Mission Avenue. What's that site? See the N on, see Mission Avenue, then there's like an N, if you just go down, and there's a little blue area that says moderate and above moderate proposed.
So Commissioner Ballma, that's a, currently, it's a vacant site that's zoned Estate B resident, or it's zoned residential Estate B.
Is that by that Copper Shopping Center area?
It is, it's a little west of there, on the west side of whatever that road is, and it's basically a big hillside, has a lot of inherent constraints with its topography and geology that's existing there.
I thought that's where it was. I just was kind of just curious to see some of these sites, where they actually were. But some of them are just, like you said, a shopping center that has a lot of parking that isn't, like, utilized. There's one down here that's on Vista Way. It's down, I don't know if you have it on this slide, but it's on the slide, it's on B69 of our staff report. I just wondered where that one was, if that was, I know there's a Walmart, there's all that shopping center, there's a couple of restaurants and stuff. I'm not sure exactly how that falls and where that is, but that was interesting, too, to see, like, what site is that? So it might be just a parking lot, like you said, that some might be underutilized commercial areas, right?
Yes, I believe that is to the east of Jefferson, so it would be on Vista Way.
Yeah.
There are shopping centers that parallel the freeway.
Yeah.
The Walmart Center, that's fairly built out, so the capacity may not be there.
No, it's not on this slide. It isn't on here. It's on these other maps we got. Anyway, I just was, I'm just curious to see how these different, you know, how they come together. I agree with the Sustainable Corridor Plan, though.
Thank you, Rob. I don't, Commissioner Dodds, I spoke too soon. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Looking at your map, I'm seeing certain areas where there's low income. Are these, are just going to be specifically just low income, or is it segregated, or are there going to be a mix of low, moderate? My concern is that we're creating projects, project areas of just low income and nothing else.
Commissioner Dodds, the sites inventory accounts for areas that can accommodate a variety of income levels. Sites that do, that are designated for lower income don't necessarily need to develop for lower income, or vice versa. So the sites were identified based on areas where there might be, they might be near transit, or in areas that have less affordable housing, that would make sense, so the corridors are, do lend themselves to accommodate the capacity as shown, and per the criteria in state laws, the lower-income sites were selected based on their location.
And Commissioner Dodds, to reiterate, what would qualify one of these projects isn't 100% affordability, it's only 20%. So you would have a mixed-income project if someone took in, took account the minimum of 20%, and tried to take advantage of the provisions that are being proposed.
Thank you.
Why did you take out the time extension on the existing, I guess, Exhibit A? It was like the time extension was taken out. What was your logic, what was your ideas on that? Like, why not?
Commissioner Ballma, that was, that's an existing edit from a previous zone amendment. That's in there for reference. The section is 3042 in its entirety, so the, I believe the copy attached to the staff report had it highlighted in blue to emphasize the new language, but that strikeout has already been accounted for, I believe, awaiting Coastal Commission certification.
Commissioner Ballma, that's correct. Rob alluded to, in the inland area, the revised time extension provisions have been in place since May 2020, more or less. In the coastal zone, we're still awaiting approval of a local coastal plan amendment by the Coastal Commission for those time extension provisions to be applicable in the coastal zone. So that's why you see it struck out there, because it's not wholly implemented yet in the coastal zone.
Thank you, Rob. We'll call you back if we have any other questions. Again, this is also a public hearing, so we invite the public to provide input. Any slips on this item?
Chairman Rizales, again, we have no slips on this item.
Great, thank you. Anybody like to come forward and weigh in on this item? You're welcome to, give it a moment. Okay, so we'll close the public hearing and consider more questions or commentary or motion.
I guess I'll make the motion. I'd like to make a motion to confirm issuance of a notice of exemption per California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, Article 5, Section 15061b3, under the common sense exception that SEQA applies only to projects which have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment, and adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number 2023 P03 recommending to city council approval of the Zone Amendment, ZA22-00005, with findings of approval attached herein.
Thank you, Commissioner Ballma, for that motion to approve. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Commissioner Malik. Let's go ahead and vote.
Chair Rizales, let the record show that the motion passes unanimously.
Terrific, thank you. Moving on then to appeal of city planners' determination. We have nothing listed on that item on the agenda and nothing under discussion item, so we'll go to reports, starting with myself. I don't have anything that I can think of this evening to report out, so I'll look to my right. Vice Chair Morsi.
No report.
No report, thank you. Commissioner Ballma.
No report.
Thank you. Commissioner Custer.
A question, is there a Costco going in by the airport? A lot of people are asking me that.
Commissioner Custer, not that I'm aware of. No Costco's been proposed in that area.
All right, that's what I thought, but people keep asking. Okay.
Commissioner Dodds.
No report.
Thank you. Commissioner Simons is absent. Commissioner Malik?
No report.
Thank you. Sergio, city planner.
Thank you, Chair Rizales. So for upcoming planning commission items, we don't have any items scheduled for the month of February, so it looks like you're going to get February off. There may be something for the last meeting in February, but nothing's come forward yet. We're just not in the cycle, review cycle for projects to be coming forward in February. In March, potentially, there's a pretty significant project, another transit-oriented development located at the intersection of Melrose Drive and Bobea, it's like the southeast corner. The project's known as Modera Melrose. Recently, I think it was back in December, the review period for the environmental impact report closed, and I just, this week received, or yesterday, I'm sorry, Friday, received a draft of the response to comments. So we'll be reviewing those with the goal of scheduling it for the second meeting in March. And at that same meeting, we intend to bring forward the planning commission's work plan for the 2023-2024 fiscal year. With respect to city council items, we have the Freeman Street Apartments. It's a project that hasn't been brought to this body because it's in the downtown district, but it consists of proposed 24 apartment units located just down the street here on Freeman Street, on the backside of the red and white market and the cafe there. It's a density bonus project, so they're getting, the base density would allow 20 units, and they're proposing 24 units. That's scheduled to go to council on the 25th, and then this zoning text amendment that you just considered tonight, made a recommendation on, will be moving forward to the city council at their first meeting in March, along with the Allo Spa item that you considered at your last meeting. That concludes the city planner update.
I know at our Visit Oceanside board meeting we just had, I know Leslie was talking about having a presentation to the planning commission on the Tourism Master Plan. Is that something that you're going to entertain to present to us, or?
Yeah, what we've, Commissioner Ballma, what we've discussed with Visit Oceanside is when they're ready, prepared to present that, the draft framework of the plan or the goals, or whatever it is that they want to present to PC, just to give us a heads up, and we'll certainly schedule that item for your information.
Okay.
Great, I think we're done for this evening. We're adjourned.
Another quickie, huh?